Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sander.
Here.
Councilmember Garvey.
Here.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Here.
And Mayor Terry.
Here.
And for the record, Councilmember Skokelin is absent this evening.
Thank you. We'll move on to the Metro Cable television announcement. Clerk?
This meeting of the Rancher Cordova City Council is being videotaped with closed captioning in its entirety and will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will be repeated Wednesday, April 5th at 9:00 a.m. and Thursday, April 6th at 6:00 p.m. on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can be ordered from the City Clerk's Department, and a webcast of this meeting will be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you. Next, we'll have our Pledge of Allegiance followed by our invocation. Today, we'll have our Pledge of Allegiance led by Bob Kachet, because I can see him over there. You don't need to come up to the podium or anything. And then, I will invite the audience to remain standing for the invocation that tonight will be led by Scott Heedley from the Law Enforcement Chaplains of Sacramento. Bob?
The Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for what stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, let's take a moment for an invocation. Father, we meet to serve our community, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, to make decisions that promote the common good for our community. And we recognize our responsibility to the past and the future, and the rights and the needs of both individuals and community. As trusted servants, we seek blessings on our deliberations and on our efforts here today. May we act wisely and well. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll move on. We'll move on to presentations, and our first presentation is 9.1, Volunteer Recognition and Presentations of Kudos Awards by Republic Services for the Cordova Villa Neighborhood Cleanup Event. And Mr. Harriman.
Thank you, Mayor Terry. Members of the council, for the record, I'm Steve Harriman with the Public Works Department, and we're here to give you a presentation tonight on a cleanup event that we did in the South White Rock neighborhood on March 11th. We had multiple volunteers participating in the project, and it went really well. I would like to give just a couple of special thanks, and then I'm going to have Colin Wallace from Republic come up and give a presentation. But first, I'd like to thank Mayor Terry for coming out the morning of the event and helping us with the proceedings, and we drove around and knocked on doors, and that was fantastic. I also really want to just thank Republic Services. You know, we do these events in neighborhoods, and they're on Saturdays, and, you know, they come out with equipment and people and lunch and all kinds of great energy. And so, they're just such a strong partner with us in putting on these kinds of events. And so, I really want to thank Republic for doing that. And I also just want to thank VINS. Again, VINS was out helping us with the project and helped with the volunteers that were on site, and it was really fantastic. And I just want to close my statements by saying how heartened I am by the spirit of volunteerism in Rancher Cordova. We do a lot of projects, and we always get a huge turnout of volunteers, and there's so much commitment out there in the community for doing things like that. And this project was right in line with that. So with that, I would like to bring up Colin, and he's going to give you a presentation on the project.
Good evening, Mayor Terry and members of the council. Again, my name is Colin Wallace, and I'm with Republic Services. I'm the Community Relations Manager. Before I kind of jump into this, I want to echo Steve's comment, and I want to thank Mayor Terry for coming out and helping us out. But I also really want a big thank you to all the staff who helped us. Steve was a huge part of this, Loriann, and everyone else who came out and helped out that day. I know I saw Albert out there, and I'm sure I'm forgetting some other folks, but thank you to the city. It's great to have a real, true partnership with the city to make this happen. So where this whole idea kind of started was about a year and a half ago, Republic wanted to try to come up with something to really kind of help the city, even though even in a small way, we wanted to do something. So what we did was, we started reaching out to folks we worked with, community organizations, nonprofits that we supported in the past, and we started asking, what can we do? How can we do this? And I know Councilmember Sander, he was involved with coming up and really crafting the idea of this neighborhood cleanup. We did three last year, and we learned a lot through our efforts, and they were a success, but we really took it up a notch here in 2017, and it was a great success on March 11th, when we went out there and really cleaned up the city. So what we did was, we worked with the city to identify a neighborhood. In this case, it was the South White Rock neighborhood. We worked with the city, and we developed door hangers. We hung those doors on almost 700 houses, over 700 houses, to notify them of this program. The program being an extra bulky added pickup, so they can get rid of extra garbage. We invited them to come out to help with the cleanup and celebrate afterwards with a picnic, and we also let them know about our other big part of this whole project, which is the VINS Kudos Program, which I'm going to let VINS speak about that here in a few minutes. So, we had a huge turnout, more than we expected, both in the number of volunteers and in the number of junk that was placed out there. We collected over 111 hundred pounds of junk. That is over 10 trucks full, 10 garbage trucks full of garbage, almost 90 appliances, 72 e-waste, and everything that we took was either, or all the junk we took was sent to a C&amp;D sorting facility, so all the material that could be recycled was recycled to help the city's diversion. Now, I mentioned we also had a great turnout of volunteers, and we did. These volunteers worked their heart, they worked as hard as anyone could work hauling the material and getting rid of it, and we really couldn't have done it out with them, and I wanted to single them out, and I would actually like to ask a few folks to come up and be recognized and talk about the organizations. The three organizations that really stepped up for us was the Cordova High School Football Team and Coach Darren, the Developmental Disabled Service Organization with Charlotte McKenna, and the Rancher Cordova Police Activity Leagues with Deputy Jose De La Cruz. Could you guys come up just one second and be recognized? And then also, if you'd like to just spend, you know, just a quick second to talk about your organizations, I'd really appreciate it. Because I think, like we talked about, this was a community event, and we couldn't have done it without those guys, so I'd like to introduce, why don't we start off with the DDSO?
I'm Charlotte McKenna. Thank you so much for having us here tonight, and thanking us. I work with this disabled, developmentally disabled adults, and we're working in community volunteer programs, which helps us prepare them for work. And we've been able to help build resumes. We did this last year as well as this year, and this is one of our favorite events. I think there's something about following a giant trash can that just really excites them. As we bring them out here, and it's difficult to get these guys out on a Saturday because they don't have transportation. They rely on public transportation to get them to the program where I can pick them up and bring them out. And what I've seen in them in this last year, volunteering for this event and others through Rancher Cordova, is a growth in their confidence, self-esteem. A couple of them are really developing leadership abilities through doing this volunteer work and having people depend on them. So this is enormous for our clients, and we really appreciate the opportunity to do this. Thank you.
Coach Darren?
Hi. I'm the football coach, as you know, and we really appreciate being involved in this. We really want to just develop a record of continuing to give back to this community. And actually, we were fooled into doing this.
I really want to hear what comes next.
It's crazy how much time and how fast time goes by when you're following a crusher, and you're just throwing things in the back of the crusher. It was a lot of fun, and we want to do it every year, so thank you.
Can I just say something, too, that, yes, I know we made an investment in the team with Measure H funds, but for a sports team offseason, for you to be able to get kids organized to show up for something like that, and you probably have a lifting class or something going on in the spring, but that was really impressive to see something. It's one thing for you to figure out how to do it in the fall when, you know, you can make them run extra or do other things. If they don't show up, fine, or not run extra. But for them to show up when you're not in season, I think that was really impressive, and speaks a lot to your leadership.
Thank you. I think we proved that we can play a little football this last year.
It definitely did.
Now, it's about character building, so we appreciate it.
So is this more of an upper body workout, or?
I don't know. My back was sore the next day.
Make the kids do it next time. Just a kid.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. I'm Officer De La Cruz with Rancher Cordova Police Department. I'm also the director of our Police Activities League. We were not fooled. We support Republic Services cleanups all the time, and so I brought three of, we did have 16 of our Youth Leadership Council that attended the cleanup, and so there's, come on, guys, there are three. I brought three of them with me tonight, Jordan, AJ, and Tiana. So like I said, we enjoy doing this. It's part of the give back. These kids, in total, probably do over 200 hours of community service every year, so our group works throughout the school year. And so, we shared a couple of those pictures, and yeah, I did make them work a little hard. And we made sure that we finished our route before we did eat lunch. And so, one thing I would like to say about Republic Services, our driver, he kind of came on late on the scene, and when he hopped out of his truck, he just had shorts and a t-shirt. And I'm like, hey, where's your uniform? And he's like, well, I just got called like 15 minutes ago, and they asked me if I could come in, and I said, yes, absolutely. And so, I mean, that's just a testament to Republic Service, their employees, their dedication to the community. And so, with all of our kids and then a couple other officers, who I had to motivate them more than the kids actually to pick up some garbage, but we'll be out there again, and every time that Republic Services asks us. Thank you.
Just one more thanks from me for all the volunteers. It was definitely, we couldn't have done without you, and we do have a little slideshow I forgot to go through. But finally, I do want to call up VINS. VINS has really been a partner with us from the beginning of this program. They really helped design it and take ownership of a lot of it. So I would like to call up Angel Ball to kind of, to present the kudos awards.
Hi, my name is Angel Ball. I'm a resident of Rancher Cordova, and I'm also a member of Volunteers in Neighborhood Service, known as VINS. And we had the pleasure of driving the South White Rock neighborhood after the tree planting event that was at Kilgore Cemetery, and it took us about four hours, and I had Julie O'Neil, Sandy Hicks, and Marilyn Hamm with me. We selected several homes, but we finally had to narrow it down to just five. And then, we knocked on the door and said, you're the winner of the kudos, and I think they thought we were selling U-verse or trying to sell them solar. It was like, no, we don't want it. I said, do you want this? You want this? The homes that we selected do meet the Good Neighbor Guide criteria, so we do look for that when we award. Let's see, there were five awards. They received a kudos bar, a certificate, a yard sign, a $100 gift card, and an invitation to this evening's meeting. So with that, we do have a couple of the winners here tonight, and I don't know how to work this, so could you move it to the next slide for me? There are five homes. So.
Would you want to have them come up, and then we'll do a little drawing?
Sure.
So to entice them to come and be recognized today, we're having a little drawing here. I will let Angel pull the name.
Oh, no, let Donald do it.
Oh. Oh, the pressure.
The pressure's on.
I'm going to mess up this name. Joey Huni, did I pronounce that right? You won.
All right, so we're giving him another $200. Come on up.
He's in the top.
He's the top left picture there, right?
Top left.
Yes. Beautiful home.
Top left, and then Chris and Betty Jo are here. They're in the bottom left. You want to come on up?
And then, could we, would you guys mind just doing one group picture of everyone involved? And then doing a one-group picture of everyone involved who's in the program? I really appreciate it. Thank you.
You guys want to come around?
I think that would be good. Yes. Yes. You didn't want the. They're in the way. Yes, and you have a beautiful home. Yes, and you have a beautiful home. Green level.
Yay. Thank you, everyone. I don't know if everyone's staying from my report, so I'll just point out that Tony Sinca got a great haircut on Friday. We had a lot of fun over at St. Baldry's. In case you haven't noticed, he's a little bit shorter than the last time you saw him.
Yeah, but his grows faster than yours.
Sure does. I say, I think they cut mine a little bit shorter, too, maybe. With that, we will have, we will introduce a new city employee, Asha Crelin, Assistant Communication Specialist, and we have Maria to do it.
Well, they're coming up. Tony, we need a recycle can up here.
I'll put one up.
Thank you. I don't.
I'll put one up.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Maria Neestad with the City's Communication and Legislative Affairs Department. I am here to introduce a new city employee. I'm here with Asha Creiling, who is our new Assistant Communication Specialist in our department. Wanted to tell you a little bit about Asha, and then I'm going to give her an opportunity so you can hear from her yourself. Asha is a Bay Area native, and she's been living in Sacramento for the last two and a half years. She has a bachelor's degree from UC San Diego and a master's in public administration from Columbia University, both focused on environmental issues and policy. She's had previous experience working for nonprofit organizations, as well as the City of New York's Budget Office. We don't do a lot of numbers in communications, but if we do, I know who to go to. Most recently, she did policy communications work at an environmental justice organization called the Community Water Center, which focuses on drinking water issues in the Central Valley. In that capacity, she was a spokesperson. She also did a lot of writing that included everything from news releases to social media to articles. She is an avid cyclist and also helps manage the Sacramento Bicycle Kitchen, which is, as you probably all know, a do-it-yourself, volunteer-run bicycle shop in midtown Sacramento. And that's also a nice plus for us, since we're a bronze-level city, working towards silver status. She will also be working with Zach and others in the Public Works, on the Public Works team, on our bicycle initiatives. But Asha will be focusing primarily on drafting and managing our fresh news. She'll be managing our city social media, and in addition to that, she'll be creating content for the grapevine, as well as other news opportunities, and then lots and lots of other tasks, but those are some of the main ones. At any rate, I'd love to let Asha tell you a little bit about herself, and so I will turn it over to her.
Hi, everyone. Good evening, Mr. Donald Ter, Terry, excuse me, and councilmembers. My name's Asha Creiling, for the record. As Maria said, I'm working with the communications team. I've been here one week and one day. It's been really great. I've been just really impressed with the city already, really welcoming staff. As Maria said, I have background in policy work and communications. My most recent job, I was doing a lot of advocacy work, some lobbying and community organizing, and I decided to move on to really get my hands into public service and working with a local government, so I'm really excited to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 10, Public Comment. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter on the consent agenda or not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called up to the podium by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments to three minutes or less and state their name and community residence. Under the provision of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Do we have any public comment cards?
I have three speaker cards for public comment. The first is Wendy Weston. Following Ms. Weston is Dave Sheera.
Hello. My name is Wendy Weston. I am the treasurer of the AMWynn Public Waldorf Guild, and I just came to kind of let you know how our walkathon went. We raised over $5,300, so we're really excited. In less than a three-week span, we were able to receive that many donations. It's the largest fundraiser that the school's ever actually done in one swoop that we know of, so we're pretty proud of our little adventure. This was our soft opening, so next year, we're looking to do some crazy stuff, but we'll have fun. And Ms. Woodfork's class made some little cards for Mayor Terry and the council members, so I wanted to give those to you. And then, I'm not quite sure the best way to get, have mail for Deputy Moya, he's our pop officer, and so last time I was here, okay, perfect, that's, I was like, I'll go give it back there.
Our deputy chief is sitting right in the back.
Okay, fantastic. So that was really, really helpful. We were kind of nervous about the one large corner of Rotier and Vanguard, and they were fantastic, totally took care of us, so appreciate that.
Yeah, you ended up with a police escort through that.
That's exactly right. It was pretty awesome. I felt like I was in a parade of like stars. I just wanted to tell you what we're going to do. So 10% of the funds that we made, so about $500, $300, $500, $530, excuse me, will be going to a account savings to hold, so we're hoping to qualify for the California State Water Resource Board's Drinking Water for Schools Initiative grant that's coming out this summer for our cafeteria, because currently, our cafeteria has no drinking water available, so we bring a cooler and paper cups. So that's where we're hoping to qualify, and then the 500 will sit, and we will keep pushing money there, because we'll have to buy filtrations and all the doodads to continue to keep the equipment once it's actually put in there from the state, is what we're looking at. So our projected is 2018 to have the water filtration put in.
How much does that whole system cost? I just wonder.
Well, they run, they start at 1,300, and 3,000 is more the capacity, the style that a school would need per filtration, and that doesn't count filtration filters. So the filters run between $300 and $500.
And these are the ones that would fill up a bottle?
Water bottle, yeah.
A watering station?
Correct, and that's one station. So, the, it's the California State Water Resource Board, they had a meeting, actually, I believe here, on May 20th, to have a start of an open forum about this, and then July 17th, the grant is supposed to be out, and we can start filling applications. So, something to, hopefully, everybody can have clean water at their schools, so.
Well, and that, there's some other funding sources locally that might be able to do that faster for you that we might be able to talk to you about.
Okay, that'd be great. And then, we're looking forward to seeing you in May, April, you're coming to our school, I believe, for a meeting.
Yes.
We're excited.
I think.
That's not a big meeting.
David and I are coming to our Sac City Two-by-Two. We'll be at AMWynn this.
Yeah, so, well, excited. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Can you say that for the school, the filter system would be about $10,000? Or did I miss that?
No, it's between 1,300 and 3,000 for one filtration system.
And for the whole school, you need how many?
Well, we know that we need at least one for the cafeteria, so that's the only place that, that we have like, you know, regular drinking water outside some places, but we at least will be able to have one that's available to the cafeteria. But when the school, the cafeteria is closed, they'll have to go to the drinking fountains, which are rather old, so it'd be nice to have like one inside and one on the outside because it could facilitate the pipes, would be a nice transition.
So is there a filtration system of some sort that could be built in to new water fountains, or something like that outside?
I'm sure there is. I just don't know about that part of it. I just know about the one that goes in the wall inside the cafeteria.
So, I might be able to catch it.
Yeah, sorry.
Actually, funny enough, I'm guessing that our new hire over there probably knows a lot about this.
Okay.
Because the valley, so historically throughout the San Joaquin Valley, there's very little access to clean drinking water. I don't think that's necessarily the issue at AMWynn, it's just they didn't install it, and so as they go back, instead of just putting in a water fountain in a lot of schools, they're putting in these watering stations where you can actually fill up an Algen bottle, and a student can carry around, you know, a liter of water throughout the day and refill it, because just getting a sip of water at a watering fountain is not the same thing, and it's not really hydrating students enough. But I would suggest you probably talk to Asha over there, and there might be something we could do even in the short term, that you don't have to wait for the State Water Board to come around and do it.
Okay.
And what might be really interesting is to see if this is something, I was actually just talking to somebody from the American Beverage Association, that there's some grant funds out there through the US Council of Mayors that we might be able to apply for to do this on maybe a more citywide basis as well. Having been your school board member, I know that there, yeah, there isn't something like that in, really probably anywhere in Sac City Unified, and a lot of the efforts to do this have been down the valley with Michelle Obama's Healthy Living Initiative, along with a nonprofit based in West Sacramento called the Rural Community Assistance Corporation. So we might try to tap into some of those things, but I'm guessing you might have a good friend over there that we just hired last week.
Really appreciate it. Thank you.
My next speaker is Dave Sheera. Following Mr. Sheera is Meeta Kachet.
Thank you. I'd like to begin my comments with a quote. "He has erected a multitude of new offices and sent hither swarms of officers to harass our people and eat out their substance." That's from the Declaration of Independence, referring to King George III of England harassing and fining the colonists. "But I fear that the quote is becoming more and more appropriate to describe the city of Rancher Cordova's code enforcement and blightbusters. Up until last winter, California was in a historic drought. As a means of water conservation, state and city ordinances were put into place to restrict watering of lawns and even threats of fines if someone chose to water their grass anyway. Now blightbusters and code enforcements are going door to door and sending out letters to homeowners who did what their elected officials asked them to do. They stopped watering their lawn and embraced the slogan 'Brown is the new gold,' and their lawn died. All across Rancher Cordova, grass has died and weeds have taken their place, often growing quicker than the homeowners can mow the lawn. And as a result, city officials are now threatening them with fines for noncompliance to the ordinances. They are continually harassing middle-class working American homeowners if they are noncompliant to the landscaping regulations in place. Back in September, I had a city official come to my door wearing a bulletproof vest, telling me that I need to start watering my lawn or I would be fined. And in that case... watering of lawns and even threats of fines if someone chose to water their grass anyway." Now blightbusters and code enforcements are going door to door and sending out letters to homeowners who did what their elected office officials asked them to do. They stopped watering their lawn and embraced the slogan "Brown is the New Gold," and their lawn died. All across Rancho Cordova, grass has died and weeds have taken their place, often growing quicker than the homeowners can mow the lawn, and as a result, city officials are now threatening them with fines for noncompliance to the ordinances. They are continually harassing middle-class working American homeowners if they are noncompliant to the landscaping regulations in place. Back in September, I had a city official come to my door wearing a bulletproof vest, telling me that I need to start watering my lawn or I would be fined, and in that case it would have minimal effect, because there's no more grass on my lawn, because I let my lawn go brown. I've spoken with several dozen other homeowners feeling equally harassed and have their similar encounters regarding landscaping, a car parked in their driveway which was towed for being blight, trash cans in the front yard, street numbers on their houses. Each one of these comes with a fine attached to it to make the, which makes this program seem a lot more like a police action to generate revenue than any desire for beautification. Instead of harassing ordinary homeowners, why not redirect some of the city resources? Why not focus on enforcement of the code to the vacant lot on Ribeiro Way near Folsom and Aramont that has been covered with tall weeds for over a year? Why not focus efforts on trash and littering in public places such as light rail stations? Instead of warning homeowners on noncompliance and threatening fines for landscaping that doesn't meet the beautification requirements which have been rendered impossible due to water conservation, why not educate the citizens of our city about the rebates available through the state of California and Golden State Water Company for drought-friendly landscaping? Just yesterday, the city of Davis sent out an email to the residents with an article entitled "Life After Lawn: Local Waterwise Landscapes," and a water conservation pledge drive entitled "Save Water, Winnipeg." Helpful and encouraging incentive programs like these are what makes the city of Davis and others much like it a safer place to live and makes it an area where the home values are three to four times higher than Rancho Cordova. I've been a citizen of Rancho Cordova for over 30 years, and I was elated when they became a city 14 years ago, but it seems like the programs like blightbusters are meant to bother citizens and generate revenue rather than beautify the city. I urge the council to consider changing these city programs, to encourage change by offering helping, offering helpful resources to the residents rather than harassing them and threatening them with fines. Thank you.
Thank you.
My next speaker is Meeta Kishat. Following Ms. Kishat is Bob Kishat.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I guess we're just laying it on you tonight. I'm here to discuss the parking slot reduction in new buildings around Rancho Cordova. The first one, I understand, is underway at the old Stagger Inn, where there's a mixed use and the parking slots are reduced accordingly. And then we discussed the Fong area, where they're talking about reducing parking areas already before the, the plan is in place, because Uber and Lyft are going to reduce the need for cars. I would ask you to take a ride down Folsom Boulevard and turn on La Loma Drive after 7:00 PM in the evening, and see if you can find on-street parking in that area going down to Capitalis. When you get to Capitalis, turn left and go up west La Loma, and I defy you to find a part of street-side parking area on that area too. So evidently, people who rent low-cost housing do have vehicles, and I think we should rethink this a little bit. I know you have all talked to professionals who say parking is going to be reduced, because people are going to change their driving habits, and on and on. You haven't spoken to the residents who are impacted by those areas, and I happen to know of one instance where I talked with my daughter-in-law about a residence in Portland, Oregon, and it happened to be her sister, who was next to an infill project where they tore down an existing old building and put in multiple housing with reduced parking slots. Well, the street has become chaos. There's not enough street for park, for residents to park now, because the overflow from the multi-housing area has more than two cars. And quite frankly, if she invited a guest for dinner, they would have trouble parking in front of her house. They would probably park a mile or two away and hire Uber to deliver her to the residence. So this is something I think we should talk about. I happen to like progressive innovation. In fact, I think my glasses have progressive lenses, but I think we should sort of rethink the vehicle traffic thing before we get too heavy into this, because I don't think it's going to be as dramatic lowering of parking spots than we wish. Thanks a lot.
My next speaker is Bob Kishat.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just make one comment on that item.
Briefly, sure.
I do not have the bill name memorized, but there was legislation passed by the legislature last year which mandated a reduced parking ratio for cities that were developing dense housing. So the legislature removed from us the ability to require, in my view, adequate parking at some facilities. So we're going to have that problem, and perhaps it'll even get worse going forward. It was an initiative by developers of housing to ask the legislature basically to overrule our ability to require a higher number of parking spots on our development.
Thank you. Then we should, we should ask who it is and try to have him find parking.
Well, I think the important thing is who they were, because it passed the legislature and to the governor, so there's probably about 100 people or more to get it through.
Good evening, Bob Kishat, as if you didn't know. And I'm glad to be here. I want to speak in favor of code enforcement. My pet peeve is garbage cans in front of the fence, where you can see them from the street. I think they should be behind the fence, and if people are unable to put them back, I think all they have to do is say something, because I know in my neighborhood, we'd find somebody who could put the cans back for them. The one thing I do object to is those fake fences in front of garbage cans. I drive down my street, and I can see at least two that I can see the garbage cans, and those fake fences are setting in front of the garbage cans in front of the gate the people could put them behind. So in regards to lawns, I don't know of anybody in my area, and I've seen a lot of burned-out lawns that, that received tickets or notices. So that's basically all I've got to say about it.
Thanks, Bob.
Oh, by the way, people are complaining on Nextdoor about not knowing. I think everybody in the city probably received one of these in the mail, and I suspect what they did is throw them in the waste can. So this pretty much explains the standards and what's expected.
Thank you. My last speaker card is from Mary Nessel.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Mary Nessel. I live in the Cordova Meadows neighborhood, and when I came tonight, I had no intention of speaking, but after hearing Mr. Shearer's criticism of the blightbusters, I just have to stand up and say the exact opposite. I am a huge fan of the blightbusters program, and I think it's a classic case of the people who are not living up to the city's standards are the ones who don't like the rules and regulations. I think if we kept our city in better condition, we'd have better home values like Davis does.
Thank you, Mary.
I have no more speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We'll move on to council reports. David?
Very good. A number of items I'll mention. Lyndon and I attended a Capital Southeast Connector JPA meeting last week that was entitled "The State of the Connector," and it was actually a great summary of where the connector is and where the connector's going. We had board members and alternates, planning directors, and public works managers from the several jurisdictions that make up that JPA, and I thought it was a great event to see us all together. There's a leadership change happening in the Connector JPA. Tom Zlikowski, the long-term executive there, will be retiring in a few months, and so there is a search open. I think it's open for about another three weeks, seeking applicants for that position. So that is, I think it's an exciting opportunity for the connector. I testified in front of the state senate this morning, their appropriations committee on SB 1. I was there on behalf of the League of California Cities as a board member. They couldn't get officers to attend, so they had to sink all the way down the list to me, but there was, it was actually quite an interesting opportunity, because the governor, in a rather rare appearance, came and testified in front of the legislature, and it was interesting to see the dynamic that he, he sort of imposed on the room. He got an up-close view of the Jerry Brown Show as it is, and it was very entertaining, and he made some wonderful points, including a political point about when, when changes such as SB 1 are possible. You know, when could you do a 5.1 or 5.2 billion-dollar road deal? And he said, you know, politically, it's possible in my case, because I've got nowhere to go after this, I'm not running for another office, but almost anyone else in this job is thinking about being president or thinking about being a senator, and it won't happen. So this is our one chance as a state to do this. He said, "It took me six years to get to this point. This is when we need to do it." It was really a, a great performance, but his words really resonated in that room, and it was interesting seeing sort of the interest groups on both sides line up around, around that issue. I participated in the League of California Cities Committees, Policy Committees last week, the Revenue and Taxation Committee in Ontario. There's a lot of interesting activity still brewing with the league and in the legislature about, for example, changes to sales tax and whether or not sales tax should be applied to services, as well as things that you would buy in a store. So would it apply to the charges your accountant has for you or your lawyer or others, or your veterinarian, those sorts of charges? And there's, there's interesting discussions going on between the league and the policy committees and some potential authors. I think those bills are more likely next year than this year, and I don't know if they work in an election year next year, but in any case, there are very interesting discussions going on there about revenue changes, and the league frankly is quite split. The membership is quite split on those sorts of options. Lyndon and I attended a zoning code committee, I think it was just last week, where we wrapped up, I think, our final comments as a committee, and that will be coming to this council in two or three weeks. Aaron, two weeks from tonight, so that'll be an exciting night, long in the making. The mayor and I attended an academic leaders forum last week, where we talked a bit about the new state school rating dashboard that's available. Mr. Mayor, you might want to tell them more about that if you so choose, but it's an interesting way to look at the success of your local schools in a view other than a single test score or a single number. It goes much deeper, and it takes a slightly different angle on the quality of your local school. I met with the travel and tourism organization here in Rancho Cordova, and they have a very, I don't know how many of you have heard about this, they have a very interesting marketing effort that they're developing, and it's around opportunities on the American River Parkway, specifically on the river itself, and how Rancho Cordova is uniquely poised for people who are traveling and want to do something on the water, kayaking, rafting, et cetera, to visit Rancho Cordova, stay in our hotels, and enjoy those amenities here in our community. So I think that'll be coming probably to us as an information item within a month or so, but it was a very, very exciting thing that they're working on. And finally, Aaron and I met with Rod Borba and Girls' Softball Organization, talking about the future of the Mills Middle School site and that project that we're working with the school district on. Cyrus was also in that meeting, and we're sort of learning about the scope, making comments on the plan as it is, and looking for a really great project in the end. So if you have any comments or suggestions on that plan, we're happy to show it to folks, and we'll see where we go next. That's my report.
Bob?
Very good. I went to the mosquito vector control board and meeting, and there was nothing really new then. They're looking at the possible change in the budget, but I don't think there's going to be much of a change. The property values are going up, so I think that's going to help them and most of the organizations who are, and boards who are trying to keep up with what they have and possibly get ahead. As you all know, in your neighborhoods, the property value is going up, and you'll probably hear something from the assessor's office that your taxes may be going up too, but we'll have to see about that. At any rate, the mosquito vector control board is going to be working on its budget, and there is nothing new about the seven items that they want you to do about protecting yourself from mosquitoes. On, this is the other item on, that I'm going to be talking about, is the Vietnam Veterans Recognition Event that we had here in the American River Rooms on the 30th. We had over 100 veterans and their families there. It was a wonderful event, and it was just, that was the focus on the whole thing, is being able to thank the veterans, finish up with just a thank you for your services and your sacrifices, and welcome home. A lot of them didn't hear that until the 30th of this, of last month. When they came home, whether in uniform or not, if people knew, the demonstrators in particular knew that they were in the military, it didn't make any difference if you were coming home from Vietnam, or coming home from Germany, or coming home from New York, or coming home from wherever. If you were in uniform, then you were a bad guy, to a lot of these demonstrators, and it's sad, but they're, we're picking up on that now. We're going to continue either later this year or next year again, and we'll be contacting the veterans who weren't able to come and give them the recognition they deserve, and there's a lapel pin which says "Vietnam War Veteran" on it, and it says "To Thank You" on the back of that. We were giving out a lot of events, excuse me, a lot of thanks to them, and a lot of the veterans that were there, we had four brothers who were Vietnam veterans at one table. When it was all over, there was two more brothers who showed up, and we gave them their lapel pin and their folders, which is a lot of information about Vietnam, and they got lost, so they were late getting there. But it was kind of interesting to see how many people showed up and how many people were really appreciating that. We got a lot of people involved in it with the Cordova High ROTC. They brought in the colors and retired the colors. We had Mr. Jason Henry from the Veterans Resources Center of America, and he was our keynote speaker right before we started recognizing the veterans. The, well, there's an awful lot on that, too many details that I'm not going to try to cover that right now, but you can see some wonderful things online with some of the things that were done, and again, the veterans were recognized, and it was something that you really don't understand unless you're there or you can see what's been done for them. And that's really what it is, it's for them, not at them or against them. So, we had a very successful and very wonderful event on the 30th, thanking the Vietnam veterans.
Thanks, Bob. Lyndon?
So, in addition to being invited to attend the Connector Workshop, which was, was very good, Donald and I were invited to attend, along with Cyrus, a lunch put, that was held in Roseville. It was a mayor, vice mayor, city manager lunch, just to get everybody together and talk about issues in common. It's similar to the Board Chair and Mayor's Forum that they used to do here in the county, but this was more regional. And we are asked to follow up on some specific legislation that has to do with water provision, water bills in, in California, and that all came in today, and Cyrus has that so that Maria and her team can follow up on this particular couple of pieces of legislation. Last week, wonderful dedication of a mural constructed by one of our local artists, Robin Moyer. It is now in a Serenity Garden out at the VA Hospital. It's absolutely gorgeous, and if you're, for people who are going on Memorial Day or just any, if you happen to, if you are a veteran who uses the services out there, it is absolutely worth looking at. It's in a little courtyard that's between the tall building, 700 or 7,000, and, and the original hospital, just in a quiet, secluded little garden there, and I thoroughly encourage you to, to go and look at it. And then on Friday, one of the things that, that we sponsor is a contribution to the Rotary Club that they use to bring the B Street Theater to elementary schools in Rancho Cordova to teach these kids how to write a play. And I went to one of the workshops they did for fourth grade a couple of months ago, but Friday, they came with their fantasy theater, which is really only four people, and they put on seven or eight plays that have been written and won awards throughout the region. This is a program that extends to something like 4,000 schools, and they get entries from afar away. from as far away as Oroville. But B Street sends out a person to work with this class, and before that person leaves the class that day, these kids have all written a play. They band together in little groups of one or two or half a dozen, and they all write a play. It's incredible for their writing skills, for their articulation, for their learning the parts of a play, learning more about literature, and then seeing their own works performed by real actors is just an absolute trip for them. We helped to sponsor this, as I said, and I will continue to do that. Any one of us can sponsor a school. It only takes one school, and Rotary is always looking for additional sponsors. But the best part goes along with what Bob was saying. Today, I had to stop by Safeway, and Cordova Joe was working. And when he walked me out to the car, Joe started talking about the fact that he was still carrying his note that he was supposed to call Mindy, an RSVP for the event last Thursday, except that he got held up at the store so he didn't get to attend. Well, I always carry a couple of those Vietnam pins with me, and so I gave one to Joe today. So if you all hear from Joe, you'll know why. He is absolutely thrilled to have his pin, and I was very pleased to be able to do that for him since he couldn't come to attend the event.
Thank you, Lynda. I'll start off with the Air District. We had a meeting. It was fairly short, but I think that the bigger update is we will -- we're scheduled to hold interviews for finalists for the air pollution -- or the -- I guess we call it the executive director, but it's really the air pollution control officer's position this third week of this month. So applications have closed. They're sifting through, and we'll be reviewing paper applications and recommendations for the top candidates and probably interview two or three in a smaller committee than the entire Board of Directors will be interviewing late in the month. So hopefully, we'll have somebody hired or at least offered a position by the end of the month. Well, we heard about the Cordova cleanup. That was a lot of great fun for me to able -- for me to join. Folks, that was a really busy day, just to point out. I don't think I talked about it, but that was -- if you looked at the pictures, you noticed my baseball uniform on because we had opening day that morning, hightailed it over to Cordova Villa, walked around and saw them, got back for our 1 o'clock game that I was coaching. So by 2:30, I was ready for a nap. But it was a lot of fun.
You're a good dad.
Yeah, it was fun. And Lynda and I did our best to represent the council well while you guys were back in DC freezing. And then I met you there the next day, actually. I landed in DC. Had a chance to meet with Fred Hammer, or Hammer, excuse me, of the River City Church. David, he said that he had met with you last year, and they're really looking to do more in the community and offering up their space or finding other activities that they can join into. And so there are a couple of things that I think I echoed that, David, you might have told them last year, which was more helping with our rebuilding together days and then some other opportunities that we might jump on. The academic leaders forum, this is -- what, we're about 18 months into our first set of meetings on these? So these are the area superintendents, the head of Folsom Lake College, and then it's facilitated the discussion really by our resident, Ed Manassala, who's the Eldorado County Superintendent. And yeah, we talked a lot about the new testing and -- it's hard to even say that it's testing. It's the new academic standards and what's going to be kind of the metrics for determining a good school or a thriving school, and it's going to be a lot more complicated than it used to be. But I also think it's a lot more holistic in looking at the success of a student and the success of a school than just a number. Oh, Mary, you are still here. One of the things we really want to try to figure out, especially locally, but maybe even statewide, is how this has an impact on explaining to a potential buyer of a home what's a good school and what's not, because it's going to be different than just the 5 out of 10 number that we get from GreatSchools.net. And so there's basically six data points now that'll look at behavior problems and parent engagement and a lot of other things. The age of the school and the last time it was renovated is one of the numbers now. And so all of those take into account to define what a successful school is or is not. My guess is that in the short term, we're not going to see any surprises from what was a struggling school to what is a struggling school now. But it does help, I think, give principals and academic leaders and parents a better understanding of where a school may be strong in some things and not in others, and where they can spend their time. Got to visit the Splash Center for the first time. I don't know who else has gone to that, but I thought that was a fascinating visit. It was really great, and the staff that were out there were so great. The kids were really excited. It was -- I think Cordova Meadows was there, if I'm not mistaken, for our fourth grade class. And then actually got to go out to partially out to the vernal pools. I had to get back to my office, so I couldn't hike all the way out there. But what a great asset to have in our neighborhoods and for our students. And I would say if there's any schools that want to go and can't afford to go, to come see us, because we should figure out a way to get kids in a bus and get them out there, because what a fantastic place. It's a learning center focused on our vernal pools in the south part of Rancho Cordova. Briefly got to go and speak at the breakfast with a pop officer, and most of the folks from Vins have left. But the families that were picked as the best house last year, I guess, one of the treats that they got on top of the small check and the kudos and stuff that we give them is they got to have breakfast with essentially all of the pop team and our chief and some other folks at the police station last week. And I came in and said a quick hi and then ran over to the Splash Center to take that tour. Attended the grand opening of the DoubleTree Suites. So this is what was the Hyatt House. If you haven't seen it, go over there. That is now the nicest hotel rooms we have in this city. And I'll even point out another thing that I even said in my comments there. In attending events in Rancho Cordova for the better part of 10 years, that was the first time I've ever had my car valeted. And so it was a really, really nice event. They really pulled out all the stops, live music, signature drinks. They had all kinds of different appetizers and things running around and stuff. But the rooms that they've done there, they actually have some two-story suites. So and some -- just some -- it is by far the nicest hotel rooms we have. And hopefully, this convinces some of our other hoteliers to step up their game because they've got some really good competition now. The company or the owners that renovated this really didn't spare any expense. And it was interesting because I can't remember the name of the hotel that he had, but he -- I don't know why anyone would do this, but he actually -- the owner had a grand opening at their boutique hotel in St. Helena that morning. Then he drove home to Davis to get into his suit to be in Rancho Cordova by 5 o'clock and got there like 10 minutes before the whole thing started. So I don't know why you do two grand openings for your hotels in the same day, but he actually did. And so their holdings are some pretty impressive things. And they want to do more in the city. They've talked about it, of other hotels and other pieces of land that they have interest in. So I thought that was a really great event, and Kurt was here or Kurt was there with Amanda and the rest of the economic development team, and they all sung their praises of how great it was to work with the city.
They might have been in the Business Journal this past week.
They might have. There were a lot of cameras, or still photography running around. Bob, again, great job with the Vietnam Veterans Event. That was so fun to -- I think Mindy was saying that we had 102 RSVPs and 118 people showed up. So we -- I actually, if you saw me here previously signing my name on additional proclamations that we need to give to people. But it was a great evening. You did a great job as the master of ceremonies and kicking all off. Thanks for allowing me to do the pledge of allegiance and just stand there and be in awe of those great servants of ours. I think Lynda touched on the regional mayor's luncheon. I don't think there's a lot more to talk about. I think Mayor Rowan's discussion around water, I think, is really poignant as we look at coming out of a drought and the perhaps reluctance of the governor to declare an end to the drought because continuing -- wanting to have permanent rationing could drastically affect our ability to develop as a city or as a state, really compounding our housing crisis that we already have in California. So I think it's something that we should be very aware of. Mayor Steinberg talked a little bit about a regional planning initiative that seems to be really in the infancy stage. I think there's a lot more that we can talk about there, but there wasn't a whole lot to talk about at that day. It was just kind of a concept that they suggested. But what I will say is, yet again, at this luncheon, we have been pointed out as the leaders when it comes to education, especially when it comes to Folsom Lake College and our Promise Program. That West Sacramento launched theirs at relatively the exact same time as ours, and that was only possible because we committed to this a year ago, and they put the time in to come up with the software and the forms and everything for students to do. So I'll say it, and essentially, Merrick Baldwin said this, is the success of West Sacramento's program is a direct result of the investment that Rancho Cordova made last year in getting it done this fast. Had the chance to go out to Soilborne Farms for -- I don't think it's called their Day on the Farm, but they had a plant sale and open farm day, and they had hundreds of people show up. They were using park -- and we parked over at the high school just to come in to see it. But the farm stands just around the corner. I think it opens later on this month, or maybe it's May it actually opens. But again, what a great asset for our community. And if you look at -- if you haven't seen the restored, it's now Cordova Creek, right? Cordova Creek. It's looking great. Can't wait for you to actually be out, be able to go over there and walk near it and see it again. But it's coming along great. And then I want to thank --
Was it fenced off from where you were?
From the farm? I think the fence was closed. I don't think you could get over to it. I was with a tour group, so Sean -- I went over there to meet Sean, and he kind of pointed that it was over there, and I walked down a little bit. But from what I look like, the cattle fence that's at the end of their property there is closed off right now.
Okay.
I don't think you -- can you get to it from --
It's accessible on the other side.
Oh, okay.
And from the neighborhood.
Yeah, down off of Rinda.
So you can get into it from there. So on that side, and maybe he was saying they were going to open it up at some point. But the idea was, from what he was saying, the farm's land goes to the other side of the creek. So it encompasses the entire creek, too. So they're looking forward to having that wrapped back into the farm in a better way than it used to. And then I just want to thank Loriann and the rest of the staff that put together another great St. Baldry's event. We had, I think, 26 shavees. They had a bunch of our cops there. We couldn't get the chief to shave his head, but he got two of his pop officers -- or actually, I don't even think they were pop officers. There were two officers that just showed up, actually after the chief and a bunch of other people, I think. No, 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 I take that. They were still there. But two guys showed up kind of right at the end and just put their name in, decided to shave their head and make some donations. But we had a great time. We have a Neil here who I didn't see earlier. Thanks again for joining us. You can see he's a little bit shorter, too, now. But we had a lot of fun. But the one unique thing this year, for those of you who don't know, last year's honoree, Emily, who was a high school student at Cordova High, passed away about two months after our event. And so her mother and her brother actually came. Her brother shaved his head along with a few of their friends, and she spoke at the end of the event and thanked everyone for doing it. We had it catered by Cullen Nerdy, who's becoming a local Rancho Cordova food truck for us, and he even shaved his head. But we held it at America River Brewing. It was a lot of fun. I think that's what we're going to continue to have it. I think it's a little bit more fun than lunchtime in front of City Hall. And I know the beer's better there than it is here. But then again, thanks to everyone who pitched in for that. And then I'll just point this out because I have a couple of these coming up. This week, I'm going to be speaking at Folsom Lake College's donor appreciation reception that's going to be at the college on Thursday. And then there's going to be a luncheon for potential donors, I think, next month in Old Sacramento that I'll be speaking at with regards to the Promise Program. So they're kind of kicking it into high gear as far as expanding it, because the last I heard -- and actually, never mind, we're going to have a report on that. But I've heard it's doing very well, and we're having some great results as far as interest in students that are signing up. And I think with that, we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Most of the things that I had also participated in have been already mentioned, so I won't repeat those. But very quickly, I would like to highlight the tree planting event that we had on Saturday, March 25, at Lincoln Village Park. It was a collaboration between the Sacramento Tree Foundation, the city, Cordova Recreation and Parks District, SMT. And of course, nothing could have happened without the amazing volunteers that participated. We had well over 80 people who came to the event. We planted 33 trees and amazing spirit, many people who came from outside the city also, in addition to many people from the neighborhood. Great event, people from different age ranges, different sizes and shapes. It was really just a fun event, a lot of laughter. So I want to really thank our staff, Loriann and Steve Harriman and our facilities team who helped greatly to put this event together. It was a lot of fun, and we plan more of this in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item 13. Consent agenda. Consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Are there any items that we need to have pulled? Bob?
I have a question on 13.4.
Okay.
I'm sorry, 13 -- yeah, .4.
Okay, so we'll --
I need to discuss 13.3.
You'd like to discuss 13.3? Okay.
And I will move approval of 13.1, 13.2, and 13.5.
So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
And Mayor Terry.
Aye.
And for the record, councilmember Schockland is absent.
Thank you. That will move on to item 13.3, resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract amendment with Mark Thomas and Company for the design of Chase Drive corridor improvements, increasing the contract amount from $360,820 to $430,820 and extending the term to December 31, 19. Albert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question really was about the scope of this particular item. Unfortunately, I was literally in the state legislature almost all day. I would have called you earlier to ask the question, but I was unable to do so. There was some discussion, as I recall, last time we discussed this particular project, about where exactly a bike trail, for example, ought to go. Should it be on-road, or should it be moved onto school property for its full run down the length of Chase Drive? And so I'm unsure of what the scope is that we're planning here, or whether we've reached a decision about issues like that or others. There's issues about the far end, where it enters Hagan Park, and how that treatment will be done, and there are questions about what happens on the corner of Chase Drive and Coloma. So it sort of seems like there's a confusing number of projects, and I don't know what our decision was on the part in between.
Good evening, Mayor Terry and councilmembers. Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department, and thank you for those questions. There is an overall vision for the entire corridor that council saw and directed staff to move forward with two portions that is under design currently. One of those portions of design is at the north end of Chase and deals with access to Soilborne Farms. And then this, the subject of this particular additional design, is with regard to the Chase Drive improvements at the intersection with Coloma. We are not currently designing the intermediary improvements, which is the cycle track. That would be under the current phasing. That would be a later phase.
So there were no exhibits attached to 13.3, just a resolution? So I really am unsure about what the design is that we are asking staff to pursue.
Isn't the funding to go about coming up with a concept for us to review?
Council had already approved design to proceed with both the Soilborne improvements, which is improvements to their driveway and to their existing parking lot, and also to proceed with design of improvements at Chase Drive and Coloma, which is largely enhancements of the plaza at that location. So it's making it more accessible for students, more room for students to stand, and better separation between students and the cars. The scope of this is purely, we're fortunate enough to receive a Highway Safety Improvement Program grant, a federal grant in the amount of just under $280,000. That's the great news. What comes along with that is the string that now we need to go through the federal environmental process. environmental process, and so, which costs additional funds that initially, when we were funding this only with local dollars, we only had to go through the state sequo process. Now that we received this almost $280,000 grant, we have to do additional work. It's about $70,000 worth of additional federal environmental review. So, still good news. It's still a net win of over $200,000, but there is some cost to adhere with the requirements of that grant.
There was a discussion at this corner that the school district did not want to entertain significant enhancement on this corner, because they didn't want any sort of requirement for maintenance or something of a larger plaza or a larger monument entrance sign for Chase Drive, the high school, Hagan Park, et cetera, down Chase Drive. So, this would appear to impact on that decision. I think my response, and might have been Mr. Terry's response as well to that, was, could we talk to the school district about ceding us some territory so that we could appropriately manage the corner, instead of just acquiescing to the local principal's desire not to have something additional to maintain on his corner?
Can we clarify? Because I want to make sure you and I are on the same page. I think we are. Are you talking about signage at Coloma and Chase?
Yes.
Yeah, you are. Okay, okay. Not down at Soilborne.
Right.
Okay. Because I actually had a question about Soilborne, now that this came up. That actually came up when I was visiting a couple weeks ago. But, yeah, I mean, if there was a way, I think there's a couple of signs that we've talked about in the city that if we could erect them and take care of them and come up with some sort of MOU.
Yeah, but it's not just signage. It's a plaza. Because Albert's comment about needing to create larger landing space for all the kids flooding to and from school is really very valid. The west side of the road of that intersection is really just your standard narrow sidewalk, and it's constrained because of the house and the houses and the wall and all that. So the only place they can stand is across the street at the dentist's office or on that opposite corner.
Right. And I just want to be sure-
Well, it would be nice if they seeded enough land for us to unbend the road there somehow, and put a hard turn with a light and everything. Because right now, I think it's just a dangerous corner, the way it's designed.
I just want to be sure we're thinking big and not getting put in a box. And I don't have a plan in front of me, so I don't know where we are.
So, Albert, has there been any discussion with the school district about maintenance of what's constructed ultimately?
We've had a, we've been coordinating with the school district throughout this process. And one of the items is, I know in the past, there'd been some question of what various parties' interests were in having a digital reader sign, for instance. In more recent history, the school district has shown an interest in having the digital reader board. So it seems like all of the parties in that area are now interested in a digital reader board.
But is it being designed to be large enough to give some space over to a larger sign?
We have also, as part of this current design, we are also obtaining some additional room back behind the existing plaza. So there is sufficient space for us to expand a little bit there.
Okay.
I would also say that we're, at this time, we're not modifying the geometry of that intersection. However, the way that we're designing this plaza, it does accommodate, if desired in the future, at additional greater cost. It would accommodate in the future if there was a desire to find those funds and modify the geometry of that intersection, although that's not-
That impacts an awful lot of properties, not just the school.
It's a more challenging and significantly more expensive project.
Absolutely. So, in terms of Soilborne, though, David and I met with Sean, and I think he would agree that, it's our impression that there is not a final design down at the north end yet, or a design that everybody, that all parties agree on yet. So that probably needs some more researching. But this particular resolution is strictly for the intersection of Chase and Coloma. Right?
This contract is specific, this contract amendment is specifically to provide the additional funds needed to move forward with the environmental work necessary to comply with the requirements of the new federal grant that we received.
So, you were very careful there, Albert, because you always are. You said this amendment, but the study and the work is not just Coloma and Chase. This is the entire stretch. So the scope of this does include the Soilborne stuff. So I had a question about that, because I think my meeting with Sean over at Soilborne, actually, I think it was a follow-up, because he'd invited me to the meeting that you two were going to have, and I let him know that I don't think that was going to be legal. So I met with him a couple Saturdays ago. So, there's a master plan for the park, and there's a master plan for American River Parkway, that the county's already adopted, that there has been, between Soilborne and some other folks. So you're saying it's not finished. It actually is. And there was some reorientation of, well, I'm just saying, that doesn't mean that they can't amend it. I guess my question is, in this work that we're doing, who are the parties at the table? Because some of them have authority over stuff that we might design, that the county supervisor can come back and change it. And then there's portions of what we've always thought is Soilborne's that are actually CRPDs. So, who's a party to all of this? And are we making sure that we're getting the right type of buy-in?
Soilborne is 100% on county land. That area that the park district occupies-
Is that county land?
-west belongs to the county in the title.
And are we talking to the county about?
The county is not in charge of the American River Parkway plan. That plan actually gets approved by the state legislature.
Okay. So are they being talked, I guess, there's been, and that's why I want to make sure that we don't write something that, we have this great thing that everybody agrees to here, yet we need permission from so-and-so before we can ever do any of it.
We have been in communication with Jeff Leatherman from County Parks.
Okay.
So that's largely been our coordination with the county.
Okay.
When that finally comes to us, we'd all like to see that one.
And that's, you're saying that's the master park plan?
No.
That would affect this? Because the concerns that I think were raised were some orientation of parking and some other things that the park district asked Soilborne to do recently. Because I noticed it differently when I went out to that event. They weren't parking anybody in their temporary parking area, but they had roped it off in a totally different way than they ever had before.
That's really a much bigger discussion than tonight.
Well, no, and I don't want to get into the weeds on this, but what I want to make sure is that whatever concerns people in the community have around this, that not only is this process including them, but also whoever the heck gets to make those decisions, because it's not us. And it's not CRPD, and it doesn't even sound, to what Linda's saying, it's not even the county. So, are we making, I just want to make sure that we're engaging the right folks, so that we're not just planning for fun, that we're actually doing something that someday could be implemented.
We'll definitely ensure that when we move forward with plans for connecting with the American River Parkway, we'll make sure that we contact all the parties involved. So far, we have spoken, as I mentioned, to Jeff Leatherman. It sounds like there are some other folks that, when we get to that phase, we'll need to make sure we coordinate with them as well.
Okay.
And we'll absolutely do that.
There is no master plan for the park, per se. It's just sort of ad hoc, as something comes up, ideas that occasionally get represented on a plan, but there is no master plan, unfortunately. We all thought there would be, but there, we don't have one yet.
Although, interestingly enough, the folks I've talked to at the county, they claim there is one.
Oh, the county? Yes. The Parks District? No.
Well, that's that side, yeah. No, I'm talking about how this incorporates into something that the county owns and a nonprofit runs that we all really care about being successful.
Right.
And making sure that whatever plan we come up for them, because we have no authority over it, is implementable. Cyrus, did you have something on this?
I just wanted to offer the possibility of two options for the council to consider. One is to authorize this amendment, but not authorize the staff to proceed with the work until they have a chance to bring the concepts to you, to make sure that it's in alignment with the vision that you had, or continue the item if there are no hard deadlines, so the staff has an opportunity to come back and present the design concepts before the work is initiated.
Hard deadlines?
We, certainly, if council is looking for more information, we can certainly bring whatever you'd like to see.
I think the question is, is there a deadline to where we would jeopardize funding or something else with this project if we didn't act today?
There is not.
There is not. Okay. I'm fine moving forward. I think the only thing I would ask is, whatever future meeting that we have on this, don't show us anything that hasn't been vetted by the powers that be that control their different parts of their corners, so to speak.
I would move Cyrus's option A, which is authorize this, but ask staff to not to move forward on it until we've discussed it.
Second.
So I have a motion. I have a second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
And Mayor Terry.
Aye.
And for the record, Councilmember Skokland is absent.
Thank you. With that, we'll move, thank you. With that, we'll move on to item 13.4, Prove a Parcel Map of Subdivision in Sunrise, Sunridge Village, Lot Map Located Southeast of the Intersection of Douglas Road and Ranch Cordova Parkway.
Actually, that's the question I got from a resident event told you, and he said, "When are they going to complete the Ranch Cordova Parkway south of Douglas, so they can start using it at least that much?" And I said, "Well, I don't know if they're going to be doing that very soon, but I want to ask about this." Because if you look at the third item there on the map, and you can see the map, I mean, that whole section of the parcel map of the subdivision in Sunrise Village, that large lot map, right next to it is one of the western boundaries is Ranch Cordova Parkway. So is there anything going to be done at any time in the future that I can tell somebody that, yeah, they're going to be working on it, or at least finishing it, so the people in their Anatolia and south can start using that American River Parkway?
I think as a resident, I might have asked a number of these questions, but Albert, I think you can give Bob maybe some good news.
There are, I hope so. There are a couple relief valves here. One of those is, as you mentioned, completing Ranch of Cordova Parkway. And the other potential relief valve is a connection of Chrysanthemum going out to Sunrise. Either of those would provide significant relief, particularly to folks that live on the east end of either Cavala Ranch, or particularly that live on the east end of Anatolia off of Pericles, for instance. It can take a little while to weave through out to Sunrise. In our communications with developers, and anything can change as it's subject to the whims of the economy, and I think they're still, even with an improving economy, they're still walking a bit of a tightrope at times. But what we've heard is a lot of interest in moving forward with construction of the Chrysanthemum connection. So hopefully, that would happen, if not this year, hopefully next year. I would say the same for Ranch of Cordova Parkway. We've heard a lot of interest in moving forward this year, and, but with a specific scope that Cressley Homes, their connection only goes from Douglas Road down to their first entrance. And so we are pursuing a city-driven project to take it from their first entrance all the way down to Chrysanthemum. There are a few challenges with moving forward with that construction project in that there are not utility poles in the way of Cressley moving to their first entrance. However, unfortunately, there is an AT&amp;T line that's in conflict with the remaining portion. So we're pursuing it, and we're having conversations with AT&amp;T to relocate those as quickly as possible, such that we could immediately follow Cressley's project, should they decide to move forward.
Is that Borderlands?
It is, I believe that it's Cobble Brook.
Okay.
Cobble Brook. Cobble Rock.
I remember they were both on the map as connections.
I believe Borderlands, I believe, is a further south.
Okay.
The connection into Ranch Cordova Parkway, you're saying?
Yes.
From, trying to think of where-
Sunridge Park.
Oh, yep. Well, looking at the map, you have Borderlands, Canyonlands and Borderlands, right? At some point, probably, you're going to go through. Is this one?
Yes, it's Borderlands, and it's, I believe it's either Cobble Brook or Cobble Rock. I apologize, I'm not remembering the correct-
Cobble Brook is on the Anatolia side.
It's Cobble Brook. Cobble Brook goes all the way through.
I was going to say, because, but that road's not in Sunrise.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for staff on this one?
It's just very interesting, having the possible of Chrysanthemum going all the way to Ranch of Cordova Parkway, and then having that also possibly, you know, at least it sounds a little bit better than just waiting until sometime in the, how many years ahead will you have to wait for that to be done? Because I know there are a lot of people in there that would really like to have that connection. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm moving forward with this, then.
I will say that the people that are going to be out there on Pericles that have to get around Robert McGarvey Elementary School in a few months would be really happy if the Parkway was finally open and they could cross over. And, because that school is directly in the way in the morning for them, in or out of their neighborhood. And so, that will be interesting. So with that, do we have any other questions?
I will move approval of 13.4.
We have a motion. We have a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
And Mayor Terry.
Aye.
And for the record, Councilmember Skokland is absent.
That's the consent agenda. We have no consent public hearing items. We'll move on to public hearing items. And our first item is item 15.1, Creekside Commerce Center Subdivision Map Extension. Who's got this one? Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Terry and council members. Nick Sosa, Assistant Planner for Ranch of Cordova. Project this evening is Creekside Commerce Map Extension. The project's requesting a three-year map extension for the Creekside Commerce Center, originally approved in 2007, with amendments approved in 2009. The request would extend the expiration date for an additional three years. This is the site location. It's a light industrial zone on the corner of North Mather Boulevard and Infandel Drive. This project was presented to council on March 20, and the council had concerns regarding visibility of potential outdoor storage yards seen from the adjoining bike trail. Staff has worked with the applicant to address these concerns, which specifically include the property line location, grade variations, and screening and landscaping. This is a, apologize for the quality of this exhibit, but it's from 2007. It's the originally approved subdivision map. It included 16 buildings and 16 parcels. In 2009, the map was amended to include eight parcels and seven buildings. One of the concerns for council was that the property line, the exhibits did not clearly show where the property line was in regards to the bike trail. We've developed this exhibit that shows distances from the bike trail to the property line, with some areas ranging from approximately 11 feet to up to 190 feet in some areas. Again, the aerial shows the location of the property lines, ranging from 11 feet to 190 feet, which created a significant landscape buffer along the south end of the property. The area along the bike trail is zoned open space and will remain visually open per zone requirements. The preliminary grading plan that was with the project was not adequate for the PowerPoint, so we included this aerial and chose three locations to show the grading level of the bike trail in comparison to the subject property. The grading variation along Zinfandel Drive is approximately 17 feet between the bike trail and the subject property. The plan also shows the bike trail along the drainage basin ranges approximately from zero to three feet, with the bike trail actually being below grade of the subject property. Staff provides onsite photos to show visually the bike trail to the subject property. This would be the location on the west side of the property. This would be the location on the west side of the property, which shows the bike trail below the subject property along the property line. This would be the southeast portion of the property line, with the bike trail approximately 12 to 14 feet above the subject property. This is a photo taken from Zinfandel Drive, which shows the 190 feet between the property line and the bike trail, and also a slope of approximately 15 to 17 feet. The council's third concern was regarding screening and landscaping. Per Section 23731080, outdoor storage areas are required to be screened by a solid fence or wall of minimum of six feet in height. The council's concern was that the variation in grade, a six-foot fence would not be sufficient for screening. So the fence would serve mostly as a security mechanism, and adequate screening would be fairly dependent on landscaping. Staff has worked with the applicant on developing a condition of approval to ensure that the outdoor storage areas are adequately screened. This was the condition that was provided, I'll read a summary of it. It requires a six-foot solid fence with a revised landscape plan required to be approved by the Community Development Director prior to building plan issuance. The landscape plan will need to contain plants of the evergreen variety, and will need to provide screening for the storage area to the best of their ability. Again, staff recommends city council find the project, recommends approval for the project. If the council finds extension not to be able to approve, may recommend denial based on the project's legislative authority. And staff is available for questions, as well as the applicant who is in the audience.
Thank you. And the applicant didn't need to give a presentation, they're just available for question?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. Council, any questions?
I guess my concern is still the view shed aspect of this. You know, we have lots of new residents living in Ranch of Cordova in the Sunrise Douglas neighborhoods, and one of the common complaints we hear from people who live there is that they have to drive down Sunrise and see stacked automobiles in recycle yards on Sunrise. And they don't like guests coming to their house seeing that, they don't like personally to see that. They don't like the feeling of, you know, having this industrial doorstep to their, to their home. If someone is coming to this neighborhood along Zinfandel, or on the bike trail, but primarily along Zinfandel, as this image illustrates, they're going to have a really great view into the storage yard area as sort of a welcome to the Stone Creek neighborhood. And I think that's sort of problematic for our property values and for our image. So if that is to be screened, it will have to be an enormously effective screen. We have attempted this before along Sunrise, without success, I would say, in previous planning iterations. We have asked for landscape screen of those sorts of areas, and they haven't really, I haven't seen one out there really yet that, that functions adequately. So I am somewhat loathe to, to approve this without some kind of really strong characterization of how it will be screened so as not to negatively impact the property values of the neighborhood.
So David and I were the ones who commented on this most at the last hearing. And I appreciate, I appreciate the additional exhibits, that's very illustrative of what we're dealing with out there. But I have to say that places like Folsom deal with this all the time. There are areas where you are up in town at Folsom on, on things like Riley Street, and you come down towards Prairie City Road or Sibley, and you do have industrial properties in there. And what they have done is a combination of masonry walls, or solid walls, I should say, you know, solid fencing of some sort, and landscaping. And that's what staff has put into the condition. But it does, it, the success of it, the success of maintaining the view shed will depend on how the landscaping is installed and what is installed. These are light industrial buildings, so hopefully we're not looking at a batch plant, but, but there is a wide range of things that could be put into these buildings. There's no question about it. Since some, since three of these buildings front on Zinfandel, it may be that there's not so much a concern about the view from Zinfandel, but there's definitely a concern about the view from the bike trail. And there's no question that when you are in the second story of the two-story homes along Ocelot, you're looking over the canal straight into the stack number six of junked-up automobiles. And that's not a very good thing to look at out your back window.
Nor is the noise, as you said last time, of the beep 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 of the forklift backing up or whatever that noise is.
There's a lot of noise, especially at two and three in the morning sometimes. I'm not sure if, if somebody can come up with a better solution than what staff's proposed, then we should certainly entertain it. But having had to deal with this in Folsom, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure how we do anything different.
Is there a way to make the performance of this screen enforceable? Other than us seeing a planting plan and signing off on it and never again being able to touch whether it works or not?
Well, you could add, you could add something like, I mean, you could specify a tree. You know, everybody's fallback, everybody's go-to tree is, is redwoods around here. The problem is whether those redwoods are the correct tree selection nowadays, considering, considering the fact that we've lost so many redwoods over the last four years. But you, we could specifically say, like we do with parking lot shading, that the tree has to achieve a certain coverage within 10 years or 15 years or something like that. That that's the kind of tree that they have to select. Because right now, it's pretty much left to the discretion of the Community Development Director. But we could be more specific in the wording of the condition.
Ideas, staff.
So we, we, thank you. So we've included that they incorporate additional evergreen trees, so to make sure that there is no discussion about, you know, deciduous or not. We can certainly add some more language to it to ensure that it's of an appropriate variety for the area and large canopies and those kinds of things. We have a familiarity with the types of trees that do well here, and, you know, it's just a matter of your comfort level. If it's something that the council likes to see, we can certainly include that as an option to bring back the landscape plan. The challenge that we have here is, is that neither staff, and I don't believe the applicant knows if this is going to be sold as, and developed as one comprehensive project, or it's going to be parcel by parcel.
Well, if it's going to be parcel by parcel, the language becomes even more important.
Correct.
Because those conditions of approval, as we say often, need to be crystal clear to a new owner, as well as the people who happen to be interpreting it for them behind the public counter.
Correct. So we feel confident that the condition reads strong enough so that every parcel owner here, as it develops, is responsible for providing adequate screening to the bike trail. To Vice Mayor Budge's comment about Zinfandel, we would tend to agree with that, that, you know, we see Zinfandel as a very important view corridor, but because of the orientation of the buildings and the parking that front directly on Zinfandel, we don't think that there will be the issue about visibility into the rear storage areas. But we can also make sure that that side property line down in that area, right? Okay, battery doesn't work, oh, there it is, right here. Will be screened as well. So you'll have, you know, your traditional landscaping here for your parking lot, but you also have the buildings to help screen this area here. So really what we're talking about is this area back in here.
Okay, so let's ask another question, this is probably a question for Albert, who's not here. If, in that, in that, in that buffer area between, oh, there's Albert. So. Beginning on the, beginning on the east side, the, the buffer area that's 171 feet, 192, 153, and so on. Did somebody say earlier today that that's owned by the city?
I believe that the beginning of the city's property is actually on the south side of the canal.
Yes, but.
And I believe that the trail itself is owned and maintained by CRPD, unless I'm incorrect.
So. That. That area. Is that city, or is that park district?
Let me review more carefully, but off the top of my head, I believe that that's all owned and maintained by the park district.
Okay, that's too bad, because we could also take the initiative, if it were city, we could also take the initiative and plant our own groups of trees in there to help screen the, because the park district is not going to do it. They can't replace the trees in the formal, the formal planting areas in Stone Creek. They're certainly not going to go out and plant more trees in a wilderness.
That's my, my understanding, but I'll certainly double check to be sure.
Eric?
If I may, we had a chance to check with Albert's staff, and, and based on the information that we collected this morning, it actually is owned by the city, the trail is maintained by CRPD. So if that is a desire of the council, it appears that we might have that ability to do that, because it is in fact owned by the city.
Plot, thanks.
That would be nice.
Okay. I, I think, the only, the only word of caution I would give here, because, you know, it's better to have this developed than it stay a big piece of dirt that's waiting for someday, for something to happen. And we did just talk about the importance of job creation in Westboro and some other things, that, you know, the beep 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 of forklifts is also the, the sound of employment. Just like, just like, just like the noise of the FedEx planes in Folsom is.
I'm gonna say, you sound just like the sound of freedom, Donald.
And that's, the connection I was about to make is, whether it's B-52s or FedEx planes, those are jobs in Ranch Cordova, so.
The beep 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 sounds like the heavy hand of government overregulation to me, actually, in terms of OSHA regulations.
So, so I just, you know, I, I think, I think we should do what we can. And David, you and I completely agree on some of the, the missed opportunities in getting the, the tree cover right on Sunrise Boulevard. And we can look at the, the newest auto dismantler out there that put in four-foot-high redwoods that probably when my kids, when my grandkids who haven't been born yet graduate from high school, those things will be tall enough to cover those stacks.
Oh, give them 10 years and they'll be 30 feet tall.
Oh, I don't know about that.
They have to have water to actually grow.
They need some water, but.
Yeah, well, and they were just trimming the ones south of there to take all the branches off, and now, now you, you can see a really ugly town wall, and the trees are actually now at the bottom of them.
So, everything you're talking about.
Hang on, hang on, I'd like to finish, though, I'd like to finish.
But we're not talking about Sunrise. So everything you're talking about is exactly why we're trying to find a solution that perhaps the city could participate in, as opposed to try to put the burden impractically on the people who are trying to develop the project.
Well, and I, and I think that was just suggested, but what I'm, what I'd like to finish saying was, I appreciate the additional information that we're getting here and, and how we can do that. It is important to make sure that we don't try to be so onerous to where this never gets built. So I, I do agree, and if there's an opportunity for us to, to invest some additional funds to, to line it with trees, I think that's great. But I think what we have in front of us now, I think, is, is a workable solution if there's some additional conditions that we need to put on, or that we want to ask staff to explore at some point. But I know we were up against a hard deadline on this the last time we were here, I don't know if that's been alleviated, but.
So why don't we just add to that condition 15, a couple of words about performance of the trees, make it performance-based. Evergreens that, that do something in some period of time. And then Albert and Steve have become really good friends with the Tree Foundation, and they can find some more trees. Maybe we can do it as a part of Creek Week cleanup.
Great task for our arborist.
So, thank you, council. If I could, perhaps we can add into the second bullet on condition 15, where it talks about landscape plan that utilizes plants of the evergreen variety of fast-growing and dense canopy species to ensure that they meet that criteria that you're looking for. I will just caution, as you look at this exhibit here, this is the one in the corner, the southeast, southwest corner. And so clearly, you have a 14-foot grade difference, and the property line is right there at the toe of the slope. And so what we anticipate occurring is, is that we'll have the fence here, and then the landscape planter will be on the inside over here. And so the trees that get planted are going to take some time to get to that height and beyond. So, and the fence is clearly going to be for security purposes. But with the right planting plan and, and proper watering, we'll definitely make sure that you provide that screening over time.
Yeah.
Lynda, do you want to suggest anything about noise?
No, because we have a noise ordinance. You can't actually, number one, we have a noise ordinance. Number two, the reason this is zoned like commercial is the fact that it's under the approach pattern for the north runway. If we had one of the county tools, like the neighborhood protection area, then we could, we would, we would have applied that to this particular area, and we would have mandated no excessive noise, no smoke, bright flashes, et cetera. Those are all covered by the FAA requirements of what you can and cannot do under an approach pattern, except for the noise. And they don't care how loud you are, because whoever's approaching is making it their own noise. So I don't think we can deal with the noise effectively, other than our, our standard, I mean, if they were, if somebody were blowing up something regularly, and it were an excessive noise, then that would be.
If it became a distribution facility, there would be that constant beep 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 of forklifts backing up, that'd be my worst case.
So you're saying like an hours of operations?
I don't frankly know what you do about that noise. All I know is when that noise occurs, and, and we lived in our rental house there, on the other, far away from this, and far away from where the recyclers are, it was clear that, that beep is a penetrating noise, all hours of the day and night.
And the bedrooms point away, the bedrooms on that side of Markham Park will point away from the noise.
Yeah. So if that were to, that were to happen here, in sort of the worst case, you'd have that forklift beep 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 noise all the time.
And you can't already hear it in the neighborhood?
It just, you would just have more of it, I guess.
Okay, but again, if you, if you consider where the, where the houses are, no, I'm not going to say that it doesn't apply, because the new Elliott project will be directly northwest of this particular area that's on the screen right now, up Spato, across the street from the park. But they're going to have a bigger problem with the noise from the park than they are with the noise from this, probably.
I have a, I think that the, with the trees for the landscaping and like that, and the, if, is the biggest question, I think, on that. If this would happen in the future, I think right now we need to look at being able to approve this updated condition, and the, making sure the trees were there to, for landscaping and all that sort of thing. But I think it would be to our benefit to approve this and go forward with it with the conditions of the landscaping and trees and all that sort of thing. But, and one other thing, as far as noise is concerned with the planes, the UPS planes are about 85% quieter than the B-52s, and I can guarantee you that, because I used to work right behind them, so.
Yeah, and I, you know, I know that there are people who complain about the, about UPS, but. UPS, but on the other hand, it's the general aviation flying over our houses illegally that is more of a concern.
About those T-38s from UBA City?
Yeah.
David, I don't know, I don't know how you would, how in the world you would eliminate forklift noise.
You just hope it doesn't happen, I guess.
I was ready to get back to the sound of freedom.
Yeah. So, it's well of the council, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 41-2017, approving the tentative subdivision map extension and updated conditions of approval.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'll let the city clerk figure out who that was, but can we have a roll call, please?
We have a motion by Councilmember McGarvey and a second by Councilmember Sander. So, Councilmember McGarvey?
Aye.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bud?
Yes.
And Mayor Terry?
Aye.
And for the record, Councilmember Scoeland is absent.
Thank you.
And we appreciate the people who are the applicants working with us.
Very much so. So, with that, we'll move on to regular calendar items. And we have an update on fiscal year 2017-18 Community Enhancement Fund Grants, applications received, and fiscal year 2016-17 Folsom Lake College Rancho Cordova Promise Program.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm Stacy Delaney, and I'm the Community Enhancement Analyst. This evening, I will be going over just a high-level update on the applications that we received during the grant application window, as well as providing a quick update on the preliminary end results of the Folsom Lake College Rancho Cordova Promise Program. So, we're gonna start off by looking at the grant application process that we use. It will be a really quick recap, and then quickly go over the anticipated award of the community grants, what those amounts will be by category. I'll share with you the number of grant applications that we received. We'll go over the timeline one last time, just to make sure we're, we are all in sync on what the process will be from this point forward. And if you have any changes to that, we can make modifications before the next city council meeting. And then, like I said, I'll provide you with a preliminary update on the promise program numbers. So, the grant application process for us really started in the January and February timeframe of this year. There were a couple different visioning meetings held with council, and during that time, we confirmed the criteria, the prioritization method we were gonna use to evaluate applications. We came up with a preliminary timeline, and then we also confirmed what the funding categories would be, as well as determined what the approximate award amounts would be per category. Staff then conducted several different types of outreach, and we held two town hall workshops in March to make sure that anyone interested in applying for grants knew exactly what the grant process was, how to fill out the application online, as well as use the new supplemental form. And the supplemental form was for any applicant that was interested in holding a program either at a school site, or somehow involving the school facility. So, it was a form that applicants submitted to the appropriate superintendent, and that superintendent would either give their endorsement, or they could withhold their endorsement. And then also this year, we're also meeting with an education subcommittee to also provide just another layer of looking at all the various applications that were received that are education-related. So, we did accept grant applications between February 15th and March 15th. Once an applicant submitted their grant proposal, they then received a confirmation message, as well as a list of all the upcoming important dates. So, on the screen is the criteria that city staff uses to determine if a project met the general city's requirements. So, I'm not gonna read each one, but these are the same general criteria that we used last year, as well as this year. Once we determined that a project met the city standards, we then looked to see if the applicant is leveraging other funding sources or partnerships. We're looking to see whether or not there's a return on investment, which is really a broad definition. It could be the creation of new jobs. It could be an overall benefit to the community. We also looked to see whether or not the applicant has the capacity to carry out the project, and that they can do so in a finite period of time, which is generally one fiscal year. And then we looked to see what the project goals and metrics are that they've identified in their proposal. We want to make sure that whatever their project or program is, that there's measurements in place that we can determine whether or not the project was a success, or the program was a success. Back in January and February, these were the amounts that were determined to be kind of the anticipated award amounts for the community grants, or those grants that external applicants applied for. So, we're anticipating that you'll award approximately $952,000 for projects that fall into the arts, culture, history, entertainment, and sports category, about $476,000 in education, and then about $300,000 in other projects. And of course, the exact award amounts will be determined based upon what you approve in the upcoming city council meetings. So, in addition to the community grants, there's also some additional funding categories, and those are listed on the screen. And these are primarily staff or council-driven projects that would fall into one of these five areas, either economic development, infrastructure, public works, public safety, legacy projects, as well as the administration of the fund, which is set at about 5%. And again, these amounts may change, but this is just the approximate award amounts listed at this time. So, now to the exciting stuff. We received 69 applications that totaled just over $4.7 million. There has been one applicant who withdrew one of their applications, so we're at 68 applications at this point. And we have gone through a process and have identified kind of the primary category that an application falls under. So, they are broken down right now into three categories, either the arts, culture, history, entertainment, and sports category, education, or other. So, again, this initial grouping of applications that have been distributed are just the external applications. And in each category, you'll see that we received about $1.3 million in grant proposals for the art, culture, history, entertainment, and sports category. And just a reminder, there have been a couple programs that have already been pre-approved in fiscal year 17-18, either because they were a multi-year request in the past, or in the case of a Fourth of July Parade, you guys went ahead and approved part of that funding early. So, you have already approved $151,000 of that category. In education, we received about $1.3 million worth of applications, and you are looking to approve about $476,000. And then in the other category, we have applications totaling $2.1 million, and that budget is anticipated to be about $300,000. So, in the coming weeks, there's gonna be several opportunities when we can discuss the individual projects, but this is really just meant to be a highlight, and to share with you just the high-level update regarding the Community Enhancement Fund Grant Applications. In terms of next steps, I just want to confirm kind of the following timeline with you and get your feedback, in case there's anything you want to add to or change. So, staff is continuing to review the applications and the supplemental materials. We're having one last check-in meeting at the end of this week to really look at the education applications, and to make some staff recommendations regarding those. I have already distributed the summary matrix, as well as all the grant applications that were received electronically to you, but I would like to find out if you're interested in receiving what I'll call the big black binder. So, if you're interested in receiving a paper copy, I'm happy to make one for you. But if you're interested in just looking at it online with your iPad, I'm happy to do that as well. So.
I don't want a binder.
Okay.
I can't think of anything I'd rather not have, is a big black binder, so I'll...
Okay.
Save a tree.
Or two, or three. Okay.
It's those redwoods we need.
Exactly. So, I will...
And I, and I don't know if you can work with IT on this, but I use iAnnotate. It would be great if we could get one PDF that was...
Compatible.
Yeah, but there, there's a way to actually put in chapters to where you can go to the different ones without trying to scrolling through to find the bottom of the last one, and just send us like, if it's a thousand pages, that's fine, but have it, have it marked so that we can skip to the different grants.
With an index or table of contents, or whatever, at the beginning, that you can click in.
Yeah, I don't know if anyone else uses that. I know when I first got here, that was something I used at the school district, so I have it on mine. If there's any way humanly possible to do that, that would be great, and just have it in one file, instead of getting like 90 attachments or however many. Well, you said the number, but that's just my ask. If we can't do it, it's not a big deal. Yeah.
I'll definitely look into it, yes. It's still 68, so it'd be helpful. Okay, so I'm not gonna make paper copies for you. Great. Let's see. I would like to receive from city council your individual requests that you would like to consider as a group, along with the April 17th city council meeting discussion. So, you don't need to send it to me in advance of that meeting, but if we could quickly go around at the April 17th meeting and just identify any specific requests that council may have that you would like to consider, that would be helpful.
Could you send us this one page?
Sure.
Mine, maybe I, can I get it in Dropbox? Okay, if I can figure out how to get it back into Dropbox. Mine came out half of the page. When it, when it got xeroxed, it came out with a half a page.
Do you ever use this?
No.
I'm looking at my...
No, I just, I, I just, just to remind us of your timeframe here.
Sure, I'm happy to do that.
The, what I have here in my iPad, it shows part of the page, but not the whole thing. And that's what all of it looks like, actually, from this.
Oh, yeah, the entire PowerPoint that was uploaded is formatted for a larger page size.
Oh, maybe that's what happened.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Yeah, every, every slide that got uploaded is...
So, you want our comments back by the 17th?
Yes, that would be helpful.
Okay.
And then also at the April 17th and the May 15th regular city council meetings, as well as the May 23rd and May 24th work sessions, those would be the opportunities where we will discuss the individual applications that were received. And my recommendation is that we break it out into specific categories. So, for instance, on April 17th, we could start off by discussing the arts, culture, history, entertainment, and sports category, so that it's a focused discussion just on one category. And then we could move to the next city council meeting, and then discuss education, for example. And then the next one would be other, et cetera, in that format.
The, the only caution I would give to that is inevitably, whatever we talk about last, is kind of getting the short end of the stick if we decide that there's something in that last bucket that we really liked, and we would have traded off something from the beginning. And so, however we do that is a reminder of that anything that's being discussed in those, in those first meetings is not set in stone until we've finished all of it. Because a lot of this, and I get why you want it, I, I get from a staff perspective why that's really helpful, but I think, you know, in past years, we've had addition, we've had meetings upfront to say, okay, this is about what we wanted, wanted to do. And inevitably, every year, we've moved around things. And then we've also said, okay, well, we're willing to give up sidewalks this year, or something else, so that we can do this other thing. The helmets for the football team were a good example, where I think we kind of raided some arts funds to pay for that, along with some other stuff, because we just didn't have that many requests for arts. But if we kind of clip it off like that, I think we also need to be honest with ourselves, that we need to be able to go back and say, okay, I'm having different thoughts about this one that I might have liked, but now this is a better idea, now that I've heard more about it. So, so long as we have some flexibility with it, I'm, I'm fine with that approach.
I think it's helpful for the applicants, as well as the general public, if we can try to identify which topics will be discussed. That way, they don't feel compelled to attend six, three-hour sessions. Of course, they can attend any and all of them, but it does make it easier if we can at least direct them to one or two potential meetings.
The one thing that got really confusing for three of us is kind of like what Donald was saying. If, the business about, if you add one here, you have to subtract one here. That's not, that's not a...
Tracking, tracking the tally is not that easy.
Yeah, it's not a, it's not a quick facility that all of us have. So, it, the, the business of, seriously, the, if there's, if there's a way we could avoid that level of discussion, that would be really good.
Okay. Was it helpful, last year, we had Lisa Barons join us at the meeting, and that way we could capture kind of preliminary dollar amounts?
Oh, that's what really got confusing.
Okay.
At least for three of us, it did. I'm sure it's a good idea. And I don't know how we do it any other way, but, but that really got confusing.
Well, hopefully, part of this subcommittee that's, well, Cyrus, it's you, it's Debbie, it's Stacy, and who else? And Diane from the chamber, will give us some decent recommendations that help narrow it down a little bit. But part of it, yeah, is, as we spend the money, we're going to run out of it. So, as we like things, that means we'll have less for other things that we like. And that's, that's what kind of gets me to my point of inevitably, and, and a great example of this is the last, or not the last time, but a couple times ago, when we tried to do an exercise around what we were gonna do with Measure H, and we kept punting public safety to the end, and everyone kind of talked about legacy projects and the things that they want to talk about, and then we got to the end, and a lot of us didn't set aside money for public safety, not realizing that the crime suppression unit is coming out of that. And so, again, and that's, to me, that's what really highlighted what I was trying to say just now, is inevitably, whatever is the last thing we talk about, is the thing that we, oh, no, we don't have any money left for that, because we just spent it on all the other things that we looked at first. So, however we come up with that, and I, I know I'm throwing a problem out there without a great solution. I don't necessarily have one, but I, we need to have some sort of flexibility in that, that when we get to that last thing, or, or each time that we finish a subject, we're reminded of the totality of the other things that we still have to talk about. Because we can't just say, okay, yeah, we love the football team, and, you know, we, we want to pay for the helmets, and they won the championship, so, and I see that there's two asks in there for now. You know, we may love that, but that may also realize that there's a reading program or an after-school program that addresses test scores more, that may be more beneficial, and we need to kind of hedge our, the amount of money that we're gonna fund in there. I mean, the promise program's asking for 50,000 more than they did, than we funded them last year. So, that's, but again, that's had a lot of legs and a lot of momentum, and it was really exciting. Is that higher priority than some other things? We're gonna have to make some tough decisions at some point. But at the same time, what I've noticed in every time that we talk about this is, whatever we talk about last, is always the surprise that we don't have any money left over for. So, Cyrus, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I think one thing that's different this year, that we have done some high-level budgeting. So, we have a pot of money set aside for public safety, for education, for arts and culture, and those kind of other buckets. So, so at least we have some guiding principles to start the process. One of the other things or options that we could look at, we could start with some high-level, maybe process of projects that do not meet the criteria like we did before.
That would be very...
Eliminating some. So, so we may not be dealing with 68, maybe we're dealing with only 48 applications.
That would really be appreciated. There, there's some, you know, there's some things that we, that we talked about, return on investment, leveraging, some of these things that, that, that could, some of these things that are very nice, worthwhile projects, okay, applications. But they come year after year, and it's as though if the city funding went away, then they wouldn't be able to do this. So... do this. So we have tried to say from day one, could we please, this is not just a program that we fund in perpetuity, there needs to be some fundraising going on for your own level of sustainability. So, you know, some of those kinds of criteria, if they really are absent, then that's a problem.
So you will receive with the April 17th agenda packet, a breakdown that shows which projects staff's saying meets criteria, which projects do not meet criteria, as well as it will include a statement on whether or not this project or program has been funded in the past.
I think even taking it one step further, and I think in the first year, and again, as somebody who used to give money away for a living, that I kind of gravitate towards the things I know I can't or don't want to support is the easiest thing to talk about first. But starting there and not just, they don't meet criteria, and then also, staff is not recommending to even consider these, like literally having wording like that to it, and letting applicants know that, you know, in those first meetings, we're going to discuss the ones that don't, and maybe even though we're going to break this up, start off with across the board, all of the ones that don't meet it. And let's discuss it and decide, are there any of these that we disagree with staff? And then if not, you know, if we can get a third of them out of the way, that saves us a lot of time, and it saves us keeping track of a lot of numbers that we don't need to worry about. But yeah, to me, that's the most logical thing to start, across every category, these are the ones that are not going to make it, not break it up for education, these are the ones, and then we got to go back and rehash that. But also, I would charge this subcommittee, because, I mean, the staff's going to have the recommendations, but then at least in education, you're going to have this subcommittee that's going to be able to do it, and I would charge them, they also should be kicking the tires to, more so than what they're recommending is what they're not recommending for funding, is going to be the most important thing for us. And even the superintendent, I know, has, especially in Folsom-Cordova, has weeded out a handful that she wouldn't sign, which obviously wouldn't meet the criteria, so we can, we can kick those off the list, too. And now that we have them in hand, I think, was there one superintendent that didn't actually participate in signing off on them? You don't need to name names, but I thought it was two out of three.
All three superintendents participated and turned in their endorsement forms. I was just waiting on the individual ranking.
Okay.
Okay.
And again, that's really helpful to know what's most important to the school district, because that's probably the most likely thing to succeed. And we've seen when we, when we try to go in and imply our own ideas on other institutions, how little success that tends to do for us when they don't want to.
So then, thinking about Donald's question about IT and programs and whatnot, as we review these to come up with our own lists, so then, is the best place to, if there's something we want to dig more deeply into, is the best place this agenda or some other place to find additional details on the projects?
You have a copy of every individual application within this agenda packet. If you had specific questions beyond what's detailed there, I'm happy to reach out to the applicant, just like I would when staff has questions.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
There is a work session that's also tentatively scheduled for May 9th, and I just wanted to check in to see if that's a work session that you would like to keep for potential grant discussions around the Community Enhancement Fund, or if you have any conflicts with that date.
I will not be at that meeting.
Okay.
I've just one, but I personally will not be at that meeting.
Well, that would tend to be a problem. At least precedent has been, we don't talk about this without everyone here, barring health issues that may keep someone out for months. But if it's, if you're not there for the week or the day, then we usually wouldn't do it.
Okay, so we still have four other dates available to us.
If there's nothing else at the moment, we do have a public comment card from Darryl Langwell.
Sure.
This is not a public hearing, correct? Okay.
Darryl Langwell, Vineyards Community. I've looked through the list of requests, and I noticed that there are several requests from entities that I already pay taxes to support. I worked in government for 30 years, and I saw how it was very easy for some of these certain entities to not be very prudent with their fiscal responsibilities. This city has done a doggone fine job of working in the black, and it kind of bothers me that they're bailing out people that aren't working in the black. I have to live on a budget. Everybody in this room has to live on a budget. It seems to me that public entities ought to have to live within their budget also. So I would appreciate it if the council would look at the other public entities that are already taxing the citizens as being lower on the eligibility list for these grants. Thank you.
I guess my only reaction to that would be, we did sell this idea that some of them, I'm just saying schools as one, that there may be things that we would fund. But I agree, there are some government entities out there that probably need to be lower on the list or get their house in order before they're asking for additional things. One comes to mind, but I'll leave.
I would agree with the, I would agree with the speaker. And I think we've taken a strong stand against entities that have a fiscal prudence problem coming here seeking a bailout, that's sort of warning number one.
Especially if they won't work with us on anything besides cutting.
Yeah, we're not interested in gauging in a bailout of another failed agency. That's not our, not our business. But it is our business, sort of as the mayor was saying, to, if we can add something beyond what another agency is capable of, that's sort of where this, this money can make a difference.
And has, in the last years.
It's, if we stick to the definition of enhancement, it really, if this is something that we can truly enhance an experience with because the other agency couldn't do it, then that's, that's an important consideration.
We just have to do the due diligence work to be sure that that is true. And we've actually done some of that as a result of this process. You remember an application coming from a school district last year for a bunch of equipment, and it turns out, they had funds to pay for it, they just weren't internally communicating about it.
Well, you're right, you had somebody at a school site asking for it that didn't know who to ask.
Right. And so the process spurred it. We didn't have to put out a dime, and a whole bunch of new stuff got purchased for the schools. That was, that was actually a nice outcome as a byproduct. But those are the sort of things we have to be careful about.
Well, and I think that's, that's one of the most exciting things about our education roundtable, is through this process, I mean, I would say, besides Folsom-Cordova, we really have not had this level of engagement ever with the other two school districts.
No, we haven't.
To the point of them recommending and reviewing what's coming to us like this. So I mean, I, there's some great byproduct in just the relationships that we now have with school sites, principals, and superintendents, especially in Sac City and Elk Grove, that are vastly improved from where we were. Okay. Anything else for staff?
Just, just a comment. Speaking of school districts, though, did everybody get a notice from Folsom-Cordova about the release of their draft plan for?
No, but I don't live in that district.
I did, and I commented on it, and I got some feedback. And I think, do we meet tomorrow, Donald, with Folsom-Cordova?
Yeah.
We do.
Yeah, so I think we will actually have a little discussion at our two-by-two on that topic.
Okay, I haven't read, I haven't read it yet, but now that I know, I can't even tell you what it's called, but now that I know what it is, then it just seems.
Is this the El Cap plan? What are you guys?
Yeah, these are the supplemental funds for disadvantaged students and how they're spent.
So this is the weighted funding for lower-income students?
I do know what it is.
What it is. Yeah, so they have to adopt a plan, I want to say annually. I know that they did this for district improvement, for like program improvements, when a school dipped below their test scores where they needed to be, they had to go out and do a plan.
Right.
This is relatively the same. They have to take public comment as far as what's important and where you think the money should go before they make a decision on it. And then they have to adopt the plan and send it to the state and everything, so.
Well, just in terms of the applications that we have, knowing what's in that plan is probably a good idea.
Well, and I think the most important thing is the superintendents that are adopting them know them and are engaged with the process that we have now for this. So that's at least a fighting chance. The, the one unique thing that I didn't bring up about that meeting that we had is, of the three superintendents and the president of the college that were there, three of them are hiring replacements right now. Chris Hoffman told us he's not going anywhere in Elk Grove Unified. The rest of them are all in the process of being replaced. So where these plans go and then how they're implemented next year has a lot to do with whoever the heck is running these places, these institutions in two months.
So I do have one more update to share with you, which is regarding the Promise Program. As you know, the Folsom Lake College Rancho Cordova Promise Program was the first Promise Program in the Sacramento region, thanks largely to the $100,000 grant that the city council approved in fiscal year 1617. And I've been in weekly communication with Folsom Lake College to make sure that we know exactly how many people have applied and have been approved, at least using the preliminary eligibility criteria that they have. So as of Friday, which was the end date for their accepting of applications, they had received 170 applications. Of those, 154 individuals qualify under their initial eligibility requirements. So they would expect that 154 students could start in the fall of 2017 as the first initial group under the Promise Program. So that's very exciting news.
Based on our initial cost estimate for the program, what is that, assuming that, what's the first semester going to cost?
So it's $579 per individual per semester. If all 154 students attended the full year, it would cost basically $178,000. So the city's commitment was $100,000, and then they've also received at least one commitment from another business. But I believe that commitment was $22,500 over a three-year spread. So what I would like to do is, once they have determined exactly how many students actually sign up and enroll, then I think we should come back and have a dialogue about what that shortfall might be and ways in which we can potentially help fund it.
And I think that, just something to point out, that as this rolls out regionally, which Los Rios is attempting to do, I think there, we should really talk about the different models, because right now, ours is actually more expensive than the West SAC model, which is if you get a Board of Governors waiver, then you would go into a scholarship fund that they have that's at a lower amount. So that's something, I think, we've decided on what it is for this year, but as we fine-tune this, there might be a way to scale this and still keep relatively the same commitment levels that we had. The other thing I would just ask staff is, in going forward and looking at this fiscal year that we're finishing, if there were dollars to be repurposed, and I know our tax collection actually came in a little bit lower than we had thought for this last year, but if there is a way to make up some funds, this is where I would want to see it go. That's just my two cents.
And we do have the potential for that, so I can bring back what those recommendations would be.
That would be great.
If you would, because I don't want to have us having the reputation we have now of starting this in the region and then not being able to follow through on it.
Yeah.
That's not going to happen.
I mean, and this is just, again, my, my opinion is, out of roughly 14 million that we've spent, this has gotten more attention and more accolades than everything else we've spent combined. This $100,000 has gotten, in my opinion, more pub and more interest from residents and people outside of this region than, than anything else I can think of that we funded. Cyrus, did you have something to add?
No.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So you're leaning forward.
So I'll bring back to you that information, and it will either be April 17th or possibly into May. It will largely depend on when Folsom Lake College can share firm numbers on who's enrolled.
And their timeline, they need to attend an orientation, fill out their FAFSA and a handful of other things by when? Do we know the final to say?
I don't know that date offhand.
Because they're getting, for those of you who may not have been in some of the other meetings, these students, if they go through a certain amount of criteria beyond, they got to prove residency, take an orientation, do their FAFSA and other things like that, they also get priority registration for their classes. So they're going to sign up before most other students.
Oh, good.
Which is, yeah, I think really great, and actually ups the, the success rate of students, because they get the classes that they need and that they want. But it would be helpful to understand kind of what that timeline is. And I know, I know Kathleen has explained that to, to me at least once, but it'd be helpful for, I think, everyone to understand that, like, this is when we're going to know the date and how many people are in it for the fall.
I did request it from them today, so I'm expecting to get it later on this week.
That'd be great. Other questions for staff?
Lovely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Do we need to take a motion on this? This wasn't an actual item, right? Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
So with that, we'll move on to 17 council requests for future agenda items. I'm seeing none, I have none. We'll move on to adjournment. Thank you very much.